All right, so I'll do a very brief part of this script pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of coronavirus. This meeting of the Town of Berlin Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the meeting or the proceedings in real time via technological means. The Town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel, and approval minutes will be posted to mytowngovernment.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways. One, with both audio and video access, or two, by telephone audio only. Should any board member have technical difficulties and/or lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date, agreed to by a majority of the board, or adjourned until the next scheduled meeting. Once a chair is selected, the chair will address the meeting business ground rules as needed. And so the first order of business tonight is to reorganize the board for the coming year. I will now accept nominations for chair.
All right, I'll start. The only reason that I'm doing this, see, look, and I wrote, I wrote stuff up because you know me. I, I, I do best when things are written down. You know, I looked around, I did some research, you know, as we all know, I'm just gonna read from it. Role of a Board of Selectmen is to serve as the town chief's executive body, oversight of general operations, working with all departments, boards, volunteer-appointed, and keep the town moving forward and help drive the best course of action for the town. It's all about teamwork, leadership, governance, active roles, all needed role into one hat. So I'm going to, for selfish reasons, I'm gonna nominate Chris again. And the only reason that I'm doing that is that she's been a steady force on the board. This is what her fifth year going in. She's been chairman, as much as I would love to say mine, mine, mine. You know, I have flexibility with my job, but not enough flexibility. To me, the chairman needs to be available throughout the date for meetings, whether we go in person, whenever that is, you know, Zoom meetings for now. And I don't have the availability as much as I would love it. So I'm going to re-nominate Chris for chairman again for this coming session.
Hey, do we have a second?
I'll second, sure.
Are you sure, Peg?
You know, Chris, I would. There's nothing more than I would love to be chairman and think of the fun things that I could do as chairman. But I would much prefer to be like your second chair and be there as your backup and move up from clerk and let Scott take my role and we'll help groom him and help him in any way that we can, as you helped me, you know, the past couple of years. So I'm, I'm totally fine with it. If I had any hesitation, you know that I am not the meek of mouth and would mention it. So I'm, I'm good, but thank you for asking.
Okay, and so we have a nomination for chair and a second. Are there any other nominations for chair?
No, I want to say, I would, I liked the historic rotation that used to exist, but I don't feel strong enough about it to put any stop to it here.
Okay. So I am going to close nominations now. So we are going to take a vote on the nominations that, that's been made for chair, and that is Chris Keefe. And I will ask for a roll call. All in favor, Chris?
Keefe, aye.
Stone, stone, aye.
And Scott.
I'm supposed to say Hawkins, aye? I can't say Wysocki, aye? Because the last three years I've watched, and the third person's always said Wysocki, aye.
No, that's not true, because I've always been the, I've been the third person the past two. So.
Sorry, Hawkins, aye.
Okay, all right. Then Chris is unanimously elected as chair for the coming year. And Chris, you may take over the meeting. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you, I think, yeah. All right, well, I will ask for nominations for vice chair, and I would like to nominate Peg.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Keefe, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
It's a vote. And nominations for clerk.
I'm nominating Scott. Scott, you too are, Scott, you too are gonna end up with a book like this full of notes. So just saying, get your notebooks now.
Yep.
I will nominate Scott.
I will second Scott's nomination.
Thanks.
And we'll take a vote. Keefe, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Thank you. That's a vote. And I, I wanna welcome Scott Hawkins aboard.
Thank you.
For his first meeting and as a board member. And I guess we'll move on to announcements. And I don't know, I think, Margaret, you may have said this, but meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on both Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice, image, and/or telephone number may be recorded. We've got approval of minutes. June 15th is a revote with an amendment to include the scholarship award sum for the Mabel Marble Scholarship. And then the open session for June 22nd and June, open session in June 22nd at the annual town meeting. I guess I have a question, Margaret. Or maybe Scott, you know, do you abstain from this vote since you weren't there? Or?
I, I was at, actually, the, the June meeting I was in attendance for. I didn't see anything, I know it's wrong, especially since you've already passed it as just an amendment. I was thinking I might abstain for the June 22nd one I wasn't at, but hoping that doesn't end up causing any problems, since you still have two votes in favor, it should still pass.
Yeah, I don't think it's a problem. So I would take a motion to approve. I guess, do you want to do them separately?
No, I think we're good. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 15, the revote amendment, including the scholarship award sum, the June 22nd open meeting regular session, followed by the June 22nd annual town meeting minutes.
Okay. And I can second that. Is there any comments or questions? I thought they looked good, Mary.
Good job, ma'am.
Thanks.
And we'll take a vote. Keefe, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye. Oh, Hawkins abstained, Hawkins abstained, sorry. See, I already get into a pattern. You already have me in a pattern.
Two oh one.
Okay, then, motion passes, and we'll move on to correspondence, which I don't believe we have any.
No, you have the regular correspondence that is coming in from Maloney Properties every week, and Mary is putting that up on the website. So that is up there for folks to review, to see the progress they are making at Northbrook Village.
General public comment. And just so people know with the landline, that if you're in the meeting and you wanted to raise your hand, you dial star nine, and if you want to lower your hand, you have to dial star nine again. I think that's basically what we need to know. So if there's any general public comment, please raise your hand. Seeing nothing. Okay, we'll move on to the hearings, appointments, and presentations. And our first one is with Dave Smith, Highway Facility Superintendent. Hi, Dave.
Everybody.
Hi, Dave.
Hey, Dave.
Hey, Dave.
Hey.
Was Scott supplied a monthly report, by any chance?
Yes, I, I've read your monthly report.
Okay, very good. So everybody's briefed on that. We're back at full shift now. I don't have the split crews anymore. That was, that was a trying experience for us all. But I'm glad that's over with for now. Hopefully it stays that way.
Right.
Once again, tree complaints, the biggest problem we're facing. We did do a bunch of tree work towards the end of June on Randall. But it's, it's kind of a band-aid. That's every day I get a call about a tree, and there's not much we can do until we come up with some serious funding. As you can see, there's a problem with the rooftop unit, the AC unit at 23 Linden. It's currently only working on 50% of its capacity. It has two motors that run compressors, and one of the motors has failed. They have to be replaced in tandem. So you can see the rough estimate for the repair was $17,000, and $54,000 is the replacement. Hopefully it makes it through the summer. Side of it, it's just the air conditioner. If we're gonna do a special town meeting, I guess we're gonna have to put a proposal together, come up with a solution for that. The doors in the town hall have been modified. We've got one more to do on Margaret's office. The parts came in. I think they're gonna be here this week to do that, and that'll wrap up the door modifications. What else we have here? Mowing, catch basin cleaning, some drainage work we're doing. Staying pretty busy.
How are the guys doing with the coming back to the regular schedule?
They're okay. There was some resistance when I first tried to implement it, and then there was a little resistance when I wanted to bring everybody back together. So I think they got kinda used to having those days off. It was trying for me to try to keep everything, everything going during that time.
Yeah.
Do you still have Aiden, Dave?
Yes.
Nice.
So he just, the month of June, we got Grant to keep him, because I ran out of money in the part-time budget. But with the new budget now, the problem when I have now is he's gonna max out his hours, so we have to be careful that we don't keep him too long to, to go from part-time status to full-time status.
Scott, do you know who Aiden is?
I don't, but I, I know the challenges of trying to keep people because of healthcare laws, trying to make sure they keep the right amount of hours, they don't kick into healthcare and suddenly start costing unintended dollars.
Right. So just to give you an update, Scott, Aiden was a co-op, is a co-op, was a co-op student. He's since graduated. He came to us last year out of Keefe Tech. We kept him through last summer on, on a part-time seasonal employee basis. When he went back to school, we brought him back as a co-op student. And this was grant-funded, so it didn't cost the town anything while he was in co-op. So it worked out very well. And we were able to get him back this year on co-op, and now he's, he's transitioning. He's since graduated. He's a great kid. I'd really love to find an avenue to try to keep him full-time, but I'm not sure if that's gonna be in the cards.
Dave, is there a possibility to go back to Keefe Tech or any other, you know, insert technical vocational school and see if you can get another body to assist?
I would, I would welcome any type of co-op. This was a great opportunity for us, and it was a great opportunity for, for Aiden. His, his schooling, what he's going to, was going to school for was welding. So it was, to have him come into our, you know, environment was a little bit out of what he was going to school for, but he fit in quite well. And, you know, it doesn't really matter what trade you're actually taking up. All the trades are kind of involved when you're in an environment like we have. So I would welcome anybody.
Well, it's worked out very well.
Yeah, I believe it did.
Dave, the highway, sorry, the, the air conditioning unit on 23 Linden.
Correct.
Where, does it, does it, to me, it's sounding like we're gonna pay $17,000 to fix it and then $54,000 to replace it. There's no way to limp through the summer and hope we just replace it?
Yeah, that's, that's my plan, is to limp through the summer the way it is and not spend it. This, those.
An intent is, is fine, yeah.
They, they've already been replaced once. It's a 21-year-old system. It's tired. It needs to, it really needs to be replaced.
I remember having this exact debate at FinCom many years ago about how they, and I was not a fan of fixing it at that point, and probably even less so now. I, I tend to, my bias tends to be saving money over the long term as opposed to saving money over the short term, so that we don't do, you know, successive $17,000 repairs and end up spending $34,000 on a 21-year-old system. So, but it takes time to do those sort of things. It's why the Capital Planning Committee was just a, a really, I thought, a really good move by the town, so they can start thinking of some of these things in time.
Right. I would imagine also that, you know, a replacement unit, we would realize some significant energy savings as well.
And Dave, nice job on the, the town meeting setup. That was pretty awesome. So I'm gonna ask Margaret if we can do it next year.
Not much fun, huh? I don't think it was that much fun setting up and taking down, though.
Yeah, but you know.
It lasted an hour.
That's correct. And that forced people out of there, because no one wanted to get bit, and they wanted to, to move the meeting along and not have the droney people. But no, you know, hats off to all you and your guys for taking care of that. It's greatly appreciated.
Yeah, well, thank you. Well, we had plenty of hands, and it wasn't that difficult, really. I mean, all the chairs were right there. We had to do a little running around to get some last-minute things, but it was, you know, I think in, if it would ever have to be done again, we could probably do it in, in half the time.
Well, you have the map now. You know, you know it needs to be done, so. Is there anything that we can do for you there, Dave? Anything on your mind that we can help with?
I'm good. Life is good.
We like that.
So Margaret, there was a piece of equipment that you were waiting for. Was that something Dave was ordering? A piece of equipment, the door retrofit?
No, no, the, the two.
Atomizers.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Now, those are coming in September. So Dave, oh, Dave, you can, you can brief the board on Morris' contract to give us through September.
So I had Morris come in to give us an estimate on what it would take to decontaminate the building or sanitize the building, and it's substantial. I think the town offices was $1,700 per application. You know, and then we gotta decide, do you do that once a month, once a week? You know, how often? Do we not do it at all? We try to wait and do it ourselves? I mean, it's a lot of money. I mean, I realize it's, it's a safety issue, but, you know, maybe we could borrow the schools' equipment and, and do it on our own once a week and have Morris come in on a monthly basis until we get all of our own equipment? You know, I know that's something that we could talk about.
And do, what is the cost of the equipment?
It's about, it's about a thousand, a little less than a thousand bucks a piece, right? 900, something like that?
I think seven hundred a piece or eight hundred a piece. We ordered two of them, or did I order four?
Three, yeah, yeah. So we do have to, we do have to thoroughly disinfect. You know, there, maybe there's an opportunity still during this summer that we can borrow the schools. They have warned that in the, you know, once school starts, and I, I don't know what it's gonna look like yet, they don't really know what it's gonna look like yet, but they have warned that once school starts, they're going to need it. It's not going to be an option. So maybe we can, maybe we can continue to borrow the schools and spread these contracted disinfecting services out a little more to save a little money.
Yeah, and it's just a matter of it's taking that long to get them because they're in demand.
Yes.
Yeah.
We were, we were very fortunate to get on the ground floor of having the doors modified and the plexiglass dividers, because you can't put your hands on any of those now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tough.
Well, are there, are there any other questions for Dave? I wanna thank you for all you do and thank the guys. Been a pleasure.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Dave.
All right. Before, before we have Lisa start her presentation, I just wanted to let you know, Peg, that I'm expecting a phone call, that I, hopefully it won't come until after the meeting's over, but my son's fiancee has gone into labor.
Oh.
So if I have to leave the meeting, you'll be, you'll be here.
Wow.
So, you know, we've been kinda waiting all day, but hopefully.
Wow, that's very cool.
Just wanted to let you know.
I appreciate that. I got you. And look at that, Scott, instant nomination. So there you go. Who says that we don't move mountains in this town?
I know.
All right, so we have an appointment with Lisa, the 1870 Town Hall Manager.
Lisa's in Florida, too.
I'm at the Caribbean.
Nice to meet you, too, Lisa.
Okay, so, just jumping in, I guess?
Sure, why don't you just start where you wanna start?
Okay, okay, so I spent the last three weeks just reading all the files, everything that's been done at the 1870s Town Hall in the past, seeing what the income is, seeing the expenses, going through the building with a fine-tooth comb, meeting all my connections. Today I met Ian, the elevator man, and Steve, and Dave, and, you know, everybody who also helps to get that together. So I have a plan. But first and foremost, because I know Margaret had sent me your meeting that had included some drafts to the user guide, to the contracts, and speaking of the contracts, there were...
Excuse me, Lisa, just wanna, I just wanna kind of add that those drafts were presented to the board on March 9th. That was.
Sorry, yeah.
So that's why all of those were put on a back burner when the COVID-19 health emergency was triggered.
Right, right, yep. And, and they were useful to have. You know, I watched the video and I, and I looked at all of those. So anyway, looking at everything that has been done and what I'd like to see happen in the future, my first step was to go through the user's guide, go through all the contracts. There had to have been, oh, I don't know, six to eight contracts out there, different contracts, and in looking at the fee schedules, they were inconsistent. So what I did is I went through everything. I have consolidated, and I guess you don't have, I didn't know if I was supposed to forward this to everybody, so I guess you guys didn't get a copy of it. So here it is. Oh, you can't see it, okay.
Put it in the board's, Lisa, I put it in the board's agenda folder, Drive, and just mentioned that you were gonna be introducing this tonight.
Oh, okay, okay. So what I did is I consolidated the contract. I set up a fee schedule. I consolidated, I'm sorry, I set up the fee schedule to include an hourly rental, the selectman's room, which hadn't been in there. And I think that's about it. There was only one real small change to, again, for consistency's sake, the arts nonprofit, they come in for four hours once a month, or just four hours, and they pay $100 for that month. For consistency's sake, I increased it to 125. I believe that's the only increase in fee I made. What I did is analyzed what everybody pays and what everybody takes in by vendor to see what they're actually paying, because I guess there was some pushback when the fees were raised before, and I spoke with Margaret about this. And the people that are coming in there are making a good profit, even based on what they're paying for these fees. So that being said, so that was the only change with the fees, was just a $25 increase for the nonprofit, and then everything else was just based consistently around that. Okay. Then what I did is I consolidated these six to eight contracts into one contract, and I took the user's guide and incorporated that into it, because I felt that people were getting a contract, and then at the end of the contract said, okay, I've read the user's guide. So they were getting the user's guide either not at all or after the fact. So the contract is now an introduction to what's available, the fees, a description of the, yeah, a description of the building, the fees, the equipment and furniture, the safety protocol, and I incorporated all the changes that were made in March into this document, included the fee schedule, and then that would all go out to a person as one packet, and then they would just send back the contract. And that way they have everything they need to know, because sometimes they rent for months and months and months in advance. That way they have a hard copy of that, so they can refer to it without having to go on a website and do this and that. So that's, that's what I've been doing. So, yeah.
Well, it sounds like you've been busy.
I've been busy. The next step, I've written an introduction of myself. I'm going to contact, I contacted Travis today about getting access to Civics Plus, so I can adjust the website. I created a second Facebook page, because right now the 1870 Town Hall Facebook page is attached to the Council on Aging Facebook page. So I have not deleted the former Facebook page, and so my plan is now to get the website, the Facebook page, full of the information that it needs to be full of, and then get rid of the old page. And then my, my biggest goal now is not just to maintain what has been done at the town hall, but to increase revenue by, I'd like my focus to be, and if I, where did I put it? I think it would be very clear if I read, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this introduction that I'm gonna put out to Berlin Connect and all, everywhere. I'm not gonna go through all of it. Introducing myself, basically my background, then the mission of the town hall, I've stated that, and then, as 1870 Town Hall Manager, it's my objective to adhere to the mission statement and expand upon it to include the use of the 1870 Town Hall as a venue for small business enterprises and to increase revenue to create an entirely self-sustaining public building. I'll skip that part. I welcome the opportunity to utilize the knowledge and experience I have garnered over the years to facilitate others to use the 1870 Town Hall as a permanent, permanent or launching point for current and new entrepreneurs. So that's kinda where I'm going with that, because I've already looked at the demographics. I've looked at what's out there now, as far as the 19 charter and, and the church, and, well, no community yet, really, to speak of, and, and to build upon that and really create an entrepreneurship program for local residents who can use that building. So that's kinda my big focus, unless you have, and Peg, of course, and I've talked, and I'm super excited about this. I loved your response. What's the worst they can do is say no. So Margaret and I, I, we're talking about, I told her I wanted to actually create a workspace program in there, and apparently there's a big old grant. So Peg and I have talked about that, and we're gonna work on that together and try to get that grant and use the selectman's room initially as a workspace program, grant or no grant. And so that's another thing I wanna do, because I think there's gonna be more opportunity for that, given the situation in the world. Well, that's where I'm at. Questions?
Okay, questions for Lisa. Peg?
Peg?
Talking new session, Peg has questions. So Lisa, right now, 1870 doesn't have Wi-Fi, does it?
Yes.
Oh, it does have Wi-Fi.
It does have Wi-Fi.
All right, printer?
Yes. I assume the printer can be used as a fax.
Okay.
I just, yeah, probably, yeah.
Through the chair, the Cooperative Workspaces Program might be able to help with some of those investments.
Exactly. Maybe we can get some money for computers and et cetera. A Keurig, you know, things that'll work. I was thinking about this today, what, like, what would I want? If I were to start a workspace business, what would I put in and go from there?
Yeah, I mean, and this is something, I know that Peter's on the line, too, and he's probably like chomping at the bit, but this is something that, you know, pre-COVID, I had reached out to him to see if there was anything that Solomon Pon could do, because unfortunately, there's far too many spaces in there that are now becoming blank. But if there's an opportunity to somehow do something with 1870 or any of the other buildings that are in town for either a collaborative workspace or small mini training sessions or where everyone is stuck at home, you know, and there's that desire to, oh, I wish I could just get out for like a week, you know, let's, let's see what we can do with this. And then that's what I said to Lisa. What's the worst that they can say? You know, returning the grant application and they laugh at us and say, no, go away.
Or they say yes, and we, for the selectman's thing, and it's busy downstairs all day long.
Yeah.
But, you know, one step at a time.
Correct. Correct, absolutely.
So yes, we will definitely work on that. Um, I looked at it. I wasn't afraid to fill anything out because I didn't know if it would get saved, and then I couldn't edit it, so I kind of walked away from it until I could meet with you.
Okay.
So we'll do that.
Excellent, will do.
Okay. Uh, are there any other questions for Lisa? When you, go ahead, Margaret. Oh, just through the chair, um, Lisa has now introduced, um, this document to the board. Lisa, would you please, um, I'm just gonna ask if you would please, um, email the mission statement to, i-if you would, you, you just read it, it's a good mission statement, if you could.
Yeah, that was the original one. I didn't create that mission statement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was the one that was there before.
Okay.
Right, in the user guide, however, and it's the only thing I added, and I put it in red, um, it just says, welcome to the Town Hall. Uh, thank you for choosing us to host your, oh, I have to fix that, um, poster. Okay. Obviously, I didn't proofread that enough. Um, the 1870 Town Hall is a town-owned building intended for the community's use for public and private events, and it said in functions, but I wrote comma functions, in a venue for small business enterprises. So that was the only thing I added to that on the user guide. Obviously, I need to re-edit this and proofread it.
So the board is going to be responsible for approving the fee schedule. So that will be coming at, um, at one of the board's upcoming meetings. So I, um, I think that, um, the board's just gonna need time to digest this and ask any further questions of you, uh, before they, before they take up, um, and act on the fee schedule for the building.
Right, right. And, um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm still about a week away from, from, you know, or maybe longer depending on how, how the website works. Because I'd also like to kind of create a video to, well, not kind of, I want to create a video of the Town Hall too. But, um, I'm hoping to get everything out there. I want to make sure everything's in place. I think Peg and I had talked to this. Have the website ready to roll, have the Facebook page, have everything ready to roll so it doesn't look disjointed and unorganized so that it's really presentable. Um, but I'm hoping to do that in, you know, the next two weeks, by the end of this week, next week latest, because I'm hoping to drum up business for September, which means it has to happen mid-July to August. I mean, no pressure, kids, but, um, I just don't know what your timeline is.
So next, so, so you're, so you're suggesting their next, the board's next meeting, correct?
Is it when, yeah, yes.
That's what you'd like to, okay, well, we'll work on.
That is.
Yeah, just make sure everything gets into the Google Drive for us to take a look at by next.
Okay, okay. All right, so you want me to send this whole consolidated thing I did, send to Google Drive?
Do I have everyone? You can send it right to me, Lisa, and I'll.
Oh, I'll send it to you. Okay. All right, I'll, I'll shoot that over to you tomorrow then. Perfect, okay.
All right. Sounds good. Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan. All right, sounds good. Um, and Peg, just, the phone over there is really wonky. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. So, um, if you want to contact, I know you said you're, we're gonna come at lunch sometime, but just let me know when you want to meet.
I will. I'll shoot you an email.
Okay.
The phone system at Town Offices is an internet-based phone system. It probably is not all that expensive to actually put the 1870 Town Hall phone on the exact same system that would get you a lot of their benefits.
On what system? It is plugged into the internet. Am I?
Oh, maybe it isn't.
The chief came down and, and, and plugged it in, but I tried to make calls out of it today and it was not cooperating. I'll get it again tomorrow.
That happens with power outages here. Uh, my phone was, um, sometimes if you, um, sometime when you unplug it and plug it back in, it'll.
All right, so I'll, I'll give that a try tomorrow because the chief did come down and, you know, fiddled with it and.
Occupational hazard of running an IT department.
What are you doing here? You're the chief of police.
All right, well, I want to thank you very much, Lisa.
Absolutely, thank you.
We look forward to the information and, um, we'll put you on the agenda for next meeting.
And, and when is that next meeting?
Next Monday, every Monday.
Oh, good, Monday, beautiful. Oh, all right.
All the time.
I'll learn. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, um, we're gonna move on to the Town Administrator Report. Okay, so pull out some highlights here. Um, first of all, Chief Galvin has requested to begin negotiations on a successor contract. Uh, for him, um, Chris Keith has volunteered to participate, um, as a board designee with me in the negotiations. Um, and next Monday, um, I will, we'll schedule, uh, the board for executive session under paragraph two to discuss strategy with respect to non-union negotiations so the board can discuss, um, the proposals and what the board would like to see in a contract. Uh, the new Council on Aging Director, Victoria Flynn, will begin her official duties this Thursday. Her regular office hours are gonna be Tuesdays and Thursdays, eight to 5:30, and Fridays, one, one o'clock to 3:30. Uh, my employment contract, um, allows carry forward of up to five days of accrued vacation leave from one fiscal year to the next, provided I give the board notice by April 1st that I want to carry over five days. We had an awful lot of things going on on April 1st, and frankly, my focus wasn't on my contract at the time, nor has it been, uh, since. Um, so I would, um, I would appreciate the board accepting my notice now of my intent to carry forward, uh, five of the, um, five of the days I have left, um, in my accrued vacation. Um, is there any opposition to that? Okay, thank you.
Fine by me.
Okay, thank you. Um, COVID-19 plans and reports. Uh, first of all, um, we have layers upon layers of funding that's become available to municipalities, to businesses, et cetera. We have received, uh, $30,000, uh, $30,000 disbursement from the state's Coronavirus Relief Fund. That is the fund that was, um, that was established by the state through the, the Federal Cares Act. Uh, so our accounting office, June and Amy, have been tracking all of our COVID-19 related expenses, and the Coronavirus Relief Funds, uh, will kick in at, uh, reimbursing our expenses at either 25% if the expenses are also FEMA eligible, or 100% if they're not FEMA eligible. So the second layer of this is FEMA. FEMA reimbursement is not part of the Coronavirus Relief Funds. We have two simultaneous, um, uh, funding, um, mechanisms going on at the same time, and combined, these are going to continue to take significant, um, significant staff time. So at this point, right now, we're trying to coordinate, um, how we're going to start recording, um, all of the expenses and reporting them to the state. Uh, the Board of Assessors last week notified the Select Board of its vote to seek, uh, the Department of Revenue's approval to issue preliminary tax bills this year, and this is specifically due to the, uh, the pandemic and its potential challenges that will be presented with setting the tax rate, uh, this year. Um, we already know, uh, we, well, we already anticipate that we are going to have cash flow, um, issues, and so this, um, is intended to help mitigate those. Now, the assessors acted on this very preliminarily. They don't have to actually notify the Select Board until August 15th, but, um, because of leave in the assessor's office, they did this very early, and our administrative finance team is gonna be discussing this with respect to the cash flow issues. And early in August, I think early in August or by mid-August, I expect that this will come on the board's agenda for a vote to actually file an application with DOR to request that preliminary tax bills be issued this year. So I'll keep you posted as we move forward on that. Now, a few weeks ago, uh, the Agricultural Commission's Chair requested, um, that the fund balance they have for the community garden, um, that was initially funded from legislative budget source, I think it was in FY19. He asked that it be carried forward to FY21. We heard nothing, we heard nothing, and as of the writing of this report, we had heard nothing from DCR, but last night I received a response from Senator Tran, um, that he has notified DOR, we should be all set to carry forward those funds, and that's gonna be to put additional fencing and additional raised beds at the garden. So he did say we should be all set, but I've notified the Ag Commission Chair that I want to wait to hear from DCR to confirm that we are in fact all set to carry forward those funds and use them in FY19. The Berlin Memorial School lighting retrofit that was funded from our Green Communities grant last year, um, has been paid in full. The project has been paid in full, um, and I have prepared the final grant report. Um, you probably know that we don't have an energy committee right now. Um, there is no quorum, so we're picking up, um, some of the work here. So I've got the final grant report ready to go. Um, it does require, uh, photos to be taken. I'm awaiting those from the school. Um, once we have those, we can submit the final grant report and receive our $48,600 plus dollars, um, in reimbursement from the state for the project. Um, Peg noted earlier to Dave that town meeting, um, went really well. Um, it did take a little bit of, of, uh, time and cooperation with logistics, but, um, it turned out to be a really nice, pleasant night, and, um, everyone did a great job. So I want to say thank you again to the logistics and planning team, um, and setup and takedown team that, that did all the, uh, the work behind the scenes. Town Buildings Re.
That, that for our town to have done a limited agenda, it was such the right call, and I was floored to see so many other towns not do something like that. Like Lancaster's town went two nights and other people just had, when this had gone on to the point where you had to turn on the lights, the noise and the lights and other stuff, it would have been disastrous. I am so happy that you folks all had the foresight to just keep it as a very limited agenda, and that people in town also went along those lines. It didn't give us 17, you know, uh, petitions and other stuff.
Ah, that's a good point. Thank you, Scott. We did, the board did remove a lot of articles from the draft warrant. So they've been, they've been deferred to a special, so they'll come later. But, um, but yeah, I, I agree. Uh, that was, um, Barry was much behind that, so, um, it worked out well.
November outdoors, the next meeting will go just as fast.
Can we put in fire pits? There we go.
Um, Town Buildings reopening and reentry. So we have, um, last week, uh, town staff that had been working from home for a few months returned. I think overall, uh, things are going fairly smoothly. We have signs and information posted all over the place. We are expecting this week that we will begin to reopen, to conduct business transactions by appointment. So I'm putting that in place now. Um, it wasn't in place by the beginning of the day today, so we're working on that for this week. Um, and to that, to that end, I also want to talk about the town reopening. Today began phase three, phase three, the state's phase three process. Um, and I received a request last week from Peter Hoffman for the Economic Development Committee about using our signboard to announce, um, reopenings, particularly the Solomon Pond Mall reopening. And, and, and I, as I, as I, um, kind of explained it to him after, I, I think that Solomon Pond, uh, Mall is most definitely, uh, worthy of being featured on our signboard, as are all the other businesses in town. And I told him that I would make an effort to see if we could expand our mission, um, our message, our messaging somehow. Um, and I have, um, learned of a small grant that's available for businesses to be able to, uh, coordinate some sort of messaging, um, as far as reopening. I was supposed to call Peter today. I know you're here, Peter, and I will call you tomorrow. Um, I got bogged down today, but, um, but we can talk and, um, figure out how to get the word out for our businesses. Um, let's see, what other things do we have? Um, River Bridge Development Agreement. The development at River Bridge is nearly at 150,000 square feet, which is thresholded to trigger the $100,000 public safety mitigation payment over five years. Uh, we're paying close attention to that, and we should be moving on additional fiscal impact studies, um, in the very near future.
Didn't River Bridge also have like a $50,000 penalty for not developing a senior living facility they're supposed to be paying as well?
That, yeah, that was actually, it was. It was a CCRC, and it was, um, I think it was 15, I want to say $15,200 a year. Um, that's being reviewed in the fiscal impact studies at the moment, uh, to see if that is still the case. So will, uh, we haven't gotten a determination on that.
The case that they should pay us, or?
Whether they should pay us or not, um, whether the financial, um, whether the financial situation is the same from when that was put into the development agreement. So they're analyzing all of it at the moment.
Because I don't remember in the contract it saying that that $50,000 is contingent on the fiscal impact statement, but I can go back and look at it.
Yeah, no, there was, um, the fiscal impact studies are something new that we're having done now, um, on behalf of the town. We just went through phase one fiscal impact study, which was to review the public safety impacts, particularly, um, ambulance service to River Bridge. And, um, the determination in the fiscal impact study is that the town will make an effort to go to ALS service. So let me get you that, that fiscal impact, um, study, the report for phase one. You can take a look at it.
Thank you. Yep.
All right, and then Dave already talked about the compressors at the town offices, so, um, we're gonna be, once he gets the written estimates, we're gonna be putting in, um, a, a request to the Capital Planning Committee. And finally, I got, um, housing, the FY20 Housing Choice Project. Um, we are gonna be moving forward, um, on the procurement process for the parking lot reconstruction here at 23 Linden. Um, we also got a letter today confirming that, um, the town has been designated as a Housing Choice Community in 2020. Um, and as I've mentioned in my prior reports, this will go for two years, and, um, we will be eligible to, um, receive certain, um, financial benefits and, and participate in grant rounds and things like that with the, uh, Housing Choice designation, and that's all I have for today.
Hey, any questions for Margaret?
You can go, Peg. Go.
No, no, Scott, go ahead. I have four. Go ahead.
I'm new to this. Uh, the, uh, uh, cash flow issues of, and tax payments and tax rate stuff. Is it, is it appropriate or okay for me to sort of contact the accountant and treasurer just to learn more about all of these things? I'm, I'm fascinated by numbers, and so I'd like to understand that better.
Yep. So we have an administrative finance team that consists of the accountant, the treasurer, um, the assessing director, and myself. And so we are happy to talk with you about what we've seen. Last year, we were present, we were presented with a new challenge for the first time with the schools, the regional school districts assessment, and that put us in a, a cash flow, uh, situation last year, so we fully expected to do that again. So I will be in touch with you, and we'll, we'll be happy to meet with you.
Because I thought historically the town kept a healthy, uh, stabilization fund, so we could do some borrowing from that every now and then.
And that's what happened last year.
Okay.
That's what happened last year, yeah.
I'll learn more and talk offline. We don't need to spend more meeting time on this.
Okay.
All right, Max, um, vacation time. Have there been any employees who have come forward requesting that they carry over a certain amount of vacation time, and if so, what's the impact to the budget?
Yes, um, depend, the impact to the budget is going to be dependent on backfill requirements. So if an employee, um, we have a couple of departments that do require backfill when a person is on vacation. So we have a couple of departments, uh, transfer station, fire department, police department, all require some sort of backfill when they're on, um, vacation. The requests that I've gotten so far are not from those departments, so I can't tell you whether or not there's going to be any kind of, um, any kind of budget impact on the, uh, vacation carry forwards.
Okay. Uh, question two, on the COA van, since unfortunately it was a bit of a bust where people didn't submit their, um, artwork, and I know that we had a certain amount of money to use before the end of the month, last month, end of the fiscal year. Has that been moved into like outfitting with, uh, safety equipment, you know, first aid stuff, you know, that actually goes inside the van?
Yes. Um, so an AED has been purchased with some of the remaining grant funds. Uh, so once our Council on Aging Director starts, we'll get started on some sort of training, uh, process for the AED. Um, and also, uh, the other thing that was purchased were window decals. I think I mentioned that in my TA report.
Yeah.
Window decals, um, that was a big project. That was a big project, and I, I don't think we've got, we've received them yet, uh, but we are anticipating them to come in soon.
Uh, where is the van gonna, um, be stored when it's not?
The van is going to have to live here at this building, and the reason for that is because of the safety protocols for the van drivers. Because they're gonna have to run through safety checks, and so it's gonna have to be here for, for that to happen.
Okay. Um, question probably for you and the lovely Ms. Okay. Question probably for you and the lovely Ms. June Polen, accountant town of Berlin, sitting in the audience. How are we doing with all the old ambulance bills? I know, June, that you were reaching out and trying to see if we were up to date, caught up, still in the hole. Where are we with that? June's coming to the panelist position.
Hi, Ms. Peg.
Hello.
Hey, June.
I actually, Coastal, I sent her an email when you asked, what are we?
Last week, yep.
So, and she has not had a chance to look into it yet. It's been on hold because they've been going crazy, I think, with all the COVID and all that kind of good stuff going on there at the billing company. She apologized. I think I forwarded her email to you.
You did.
It has not been forgotten. We're still working on it. It's just as of right now. It's still right there on the front pile, but.
Okay. I just don't, I mean, June, you know my feelings of that. I just don't want to get into a bind where you have to come before us and say, oh, by the way, you don't mind writing off $100,000 in bills that we couldn't pick up, do you?
Yeah, I don't want to do that, but like I said, we're working on it the best we can at this time. And hopefully, within the next couple of months, we'll be able to get back at it and see where we can go with it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And then Ms. Margaret, one last question for you. You were talking about River Bridge. The whole traffic study and, you know, traffic coming in and out of the apartment. There are obviously already people that are living there. Impact is minimal at the Rotary to nowhere, but once it starts to get busy, and then you've got the traffic coming by the post office and Lower Pleasant Street, where is River Bridge with that?
That is actually, that's actually Phase Two of these fiscal impact studies. So what we did in that development, in that development agreement was we pulled out the primary issues. So we looked at public safety. We looked at traffic mitigation. That includes the bridge widening project, signage, traffic flow on South Street, and things like that. And then we also are going to be looking at education, school enrollment, and then impacts on other municipal services. So we don't have, other than the chief having conversations with River Bridge, we have not gotten into the weeds on the traffic mitigation yet.
Okay. Appreciate that. Just because I know the traffic's starting to pick up, and that's a bad spot anyways, on any slow day that you had 20, 50 cars coming through there at 5:00 at night. It's not going to be pretty. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Can we move on to old business and the C3 Industries Host Community Agreement negotiations?
Yes. Okay, so you've probably all seen the packet that we received from C3 Industries. This is the packet that is required by the town's marijuana host community agreement application procedure. They have supplied all of the information that is required under our local procedure. Step five of the procedure requires a $5,000 fee be paid to cover the town's legal costs with respect to negotiating the host community agreement. I received an email today from the principal of C3 Industries that it has been sent FedEx. So I would recommend that the board support moving forward with the host community agreement negotiations contingent on receipt of the fee under step five.
And do you like hear a motion to do so?
I make a motion to move forward with the C3 Community Host Agreement discussions, contingent on the money that we'll get.
I will second.
Okay. I would add that I have been a part of negotiations with C3 up to this point, and would like to continue if that's okay with you, Scott and Peg.
Bye bye.
Same. Good.
And we will take a vote unless there's any questions or comments.
I just have one, one comment. I want to, if the board is interested, if you go back to your agenda folder for tonight, the entire Exhibit C did not get into the packet. I have, it's so large that it's a file within a file. So it shows all of the draft license application materials. So you can read that at your leisure.
Okay, good. So we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
All right. Motion passes. And I believe that was it for old business. We're going to move on to new business. And a vote to authorize the TA to sign up on special article balances beyond FY20 and co-sign board of selectmen payroll and expenses with the administrative assistant to the TA.
Okay. Thank you. Through the chair, every year, the board is presented with special articles that the board decides should either be left open or closed out. This is my first year working on these, and as agent of the board, I would ask that I be authorized to sign off on these after presenting these to you tonight. Also, as agent of the board, I would ask to have the authority to sign off on the board's payrolls and expenses. I've asked Mary to process the bill warrants and the payroll warrants of the schedules, and I will sign below that as agent of the board. So on the special articles, there is a list. You've got a table in your packets that contains six different special articles, three of which I'm recommending be closed out, and three that remain open. First of all, last year, there was an article at the special town meeting for matching grants. Rather than bringing this article to another special town meeting this year, I would request that this be left open for this year to become, or to be made available for grants that require a local match. There is a very old article from 2008, another matching grant article. It's only got $2,870.91 in it. I recommend that that one be closed out. Article 16 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting was on Bullard House renovations. The Historical Commission is actually working on this now in getting quotes for a structural survey. So I do recommend that this be left open for the time being. It also could serve as local funding to leverage state or other grants. And then there was Article 36 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting. This was for the town hall elevator and curatorial building construction. The Historical Commission has not been able to get a heater for the curatorial building. This $3,215.81 would hopefully fund that, so I'm recommending that that be left open. I'm recommending that the TA consultant monies from 2019, the special town meeting, be closed. You don't need those now, $2,020.50. And then finally, 2019, Article 28 for streetlights, I'm recommending that that be closed. That's $4,386.
Okay. Any questions? That was her recommendation. Do we hear, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to authorize Margaret as our town administrator to move forward on the sign off on the special articles.
I'll second.
And do you want to include the payroll and expenses also?
Yes, please. Let's have her do that as well. I mean, I know that we're all subject to June sending it out to all of us, and she certainly knows that I plather her with questions every week. So absolutely happy to have Margaret sign off on it.
Good. You're good? Okay. So that would be included in the motion in the second. If there's no questions or comments, we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
Okay, motion passes. And we'll move on to talk about the selectmen's open meeting schedule for 2021 schedule.
L.
FY21.
I've tried to be concise in my recommendation to the board here. I know that traditionally, the board has gone to a summer biweekly schedule. Everything is running a little late this year due to COVID. And we have a new select board member who I think it would be, it would be fair to, to the new member, to have weekly meetings, at least through this initial three weeks before going to a biweekly. Let Scott get his feet wet before going to a biweekly schedule. And then the board, the board's schedules, I'm going to try to keep this concise, but I think Mary has captured it well in the calendar. Regular weekly meetings I'm recommending would resume on Monday, September 21st, but that's only because the prior week, you'll have your coffee talk. So you will have a meeting then too. So you'd actually be on a weekly meeting schedule starting the prior week. And then no, the weekly meeting would be held on a Tuesday in any week where a Monday holiday falls, and no meeting would be held on Monday, May 10th to accommodate the annual town election. The board started this this year to be able to focus on the town election on Town Election Day. The calendar, this recommended calendar would exclude the regular Monday meetings the same week a quarterly coffee talk is held. And the board could have the option of conducting limited regular business immediately prior to opening the coffee talk on those days. And then finally, summer 2021 biweekly meeting schedule. This calendar follows the weekly meeting schedule until May 24, 2021, after which the meetings would go to a summer biweekly schedule from Memorial Day through Labor Day. So does anybody have any questions on the recommended FY21 calendar?
Okay. No Peg?
Nope, I'm good. Hey, come on, I'm going to give you a break. I have my sheet of paper later.
Oh, geez.
Right on time.
Right on, Nora. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the open meeting schedule then?
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 Selectmen Open Meeting Schedule as presented by our town administrator.
I will second.
Okay. Then there's no questions or comments, then we will take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
And it's unanimous.
Our calendar.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to the vote to designate the police department as enforcement persons under general bylaw, Article 1, Section 7 for enforcement under Article 1, Section 6.
Okay. So the board has adopted the noncriminal disposition bylaw. That's Chapter 40, Section 21D of the Mass General Laws. This allows for civil citations to be issued rather than bringing bylaw violations to court as criminal complaints. This gives the town a lot more flexibility when you're talking small fee penalties for bylaws. I think it's a little more personal, but it does not prohibit the town from moving to the criminal process if the town doesn't have satisfaction through the civil citations. So I recommend that the select board designate the police chief and police officers as enforcing persons under the noncriminal disposition bylaw for enforcement of violations of Article 1, Section 6, which is the unregistered motor vehicles bylaw.
Okay. Questions for Margaret?
And we're doing this now because there is enforcement that is needed?
There is. The town has been notified of one instance where there are multiple vehicles in a yard. And so the police, although I believe there are similar issues around town, this will give the police the opportunity to look at all of them.
Bye bye.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve? Or, yeah. Do I hear a motion?
There you go. I make a motion to designate our police department as enforcement persons under general bylaw, Article 1, Section 7 for enforcement under Article 1, Section 6.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Okay. And then we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
All right. It's unanimous. We're going to talk about the temporary extended outdoor seating service for Section 12, all alcohol pouring license holder, the Berlin Country Club on Carr Road.
Okay. So under one of the recent orders issued by the governor for COVID-19, an expedited, an expedited process was established in coordination with the ABCC to allow expanded outdoor seating for pouring establishments for, we call them Section 12 license holders. And the expedited process meant that no hearings are required, no legal notices have to be given, but it is an expedited process, and it is only for the period until, I believe it's November 1, 2020, or until a sooner time if the state of emergency is lifted. So we have an application by Berlin Country Club to allow for the expansion of the outdoor premises, and all the local reviews have been done. There are a few notes that I want to make. I would recommend that the board approve this under the expedited process, but I want to make clear that the board's approval is per the annual licensed hours. There aren't any special hours that are being approved here. It's only for the approval of the expanded outdoor seating area. I also want to note that this, the approval is going to have to be subject to further Board of Health review based on Board of Health's comments about the number of tables inside and out, and the restrictions on the septic permit and food service permit. And finally, I want to, what else is there? Oh, I want to be clear that the board's approval should be for the expanded outdoor premises that is located only in Berlin, because the golf course itself does extend into Bolton. And that's it.
Okay. Questions?
When, Margaret, when we do this motion, looking at the Board of Health's concerns, can we make it sort of, they're allowed outdoor seating provided their outdoor seating and indoor seating doesn't go above their septic license or their septic rating?
Typically, I would actually advise that the Board of Health approve this subject to the Board of Health's further review. That's what they've asked for. So, and then the Board of Health would determine that.
Okay, fine.
Okay. There's no other questions. I will call for a motion to approve the outdoor seating for the Berlin Country Club as recommended by the town administrator.
I will make that motion to temporarily extend the outdoor seating services based on the input that we have now and input that is coming.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay. And if there's no more questions, we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
All right.
Great. And through the chair, Mary is going to send notice of the board's approval to the town of Bolton, so they're aware of what the board has approved here.
Okay, good. Board questions and comments?
I'll let Scott go first.
I actually don't have anything sort of.
She did that on purpose, Scott.
Well, I've actually asked a bunch of questions during the meeting, so I don't have really anything left on the list at the moment. Give me a few more weeks.
All right. Chris, then everyone needs to bring like their pajamas. We're going to be here for a while between Scott and I. I have a list, but you know what? In the interest that it's 8:10 and it's Scott's last night of vacation, I'll only do a couple and then save them. So I've been reached out by the folks who run the Berlin Community Calendar to remind people that it's an opportunity to purchase your calendar, to list birthdays, anniversaries in memoriam, there's town events. 100% of the funds go to outreach programs, and this year, it goes to various COVID-related functions. It's a very cool photo on the top. It's of last year's fireworks. So I can give you, it's Wendy, Stan's wife.
Roka Linsky.
Thank you. So she is the gal in charge. But if anybody wants to reach out to me, I will gladly point you to Wendy. They have fun calendars. I've had them. You know, when I was little, it was always cool seeing my name on the calendar. I thought I was something special. But then I got old and realized I was getting old. So, but I, you know, it's one of those things, you get a chuckle out of it. But no, they're cool calendars. So if anyone's out there that wants it, and then I will leave my other till the next meeting.
And I believe that the Selectmen will be voting on that calendar also, putting our meeting dates in the calendar at some point.
Okay.
All right. Well, I have one, just one quick thing. I thought at some point, and I don't know, tonight's maybe not the night, but that the board might want to have some discussion on communication from the town administrator and the administrator secretary as far as emails and things like that. I'm, I'm pretty satisfied because I just go ahead and whatever they forward me is fine. I know Lisa preferred not quite so many emails. Peg, I don't know how, if you're happy with what you're receiving?
I am. I mean, it's certainly a noticeable difference, Margaret, since you've been here. I mean, I'd open it, and there would be 25 in there, because Mary would do what Mary was supposed to do and keep us all up to date and keep us with the information that we need. So I like that it's pared down. I know that Margaret is very good about communication. If there's something that needs to reach the three of us, we're going to get it, you know, or Mary's going to copy us in. So I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
The way that it is.
And maybe, Scott, you might need some time, you know, unless you know that you just prefer to have everything sent to you and.
That, the fact that there's a separate email address for the board at s hawkins@townofberlin.com will do me fine, because then it doesn't get lost in my other accounts. And because the Gmail account is actually on my phone and in all the places I get email anyway. So I just have to remember to jump to it every now and then. I'll get better at that.
All right. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, Margaret, do you want to at some point put together goals? They could be perhaps even the goals that, you know, are still on the table, you know, unless, unless there's something that you wanted to do in addition. We could put that on an agenda.
For town administrator goals or for board, or for board?
Well, I was talking about town administrator goals, but.
I'll have to go through my list again.
Is it right behind you?
Really, those were adopted, those were adopted in February before COVID-19. I have to.
I know, I know. Maybe just an updated list that Scott, you know, could be aware of what, what's on the table.
I shared, I shared my, my list with him from February, so.
Okay.
You know, and Chris, it's funny that you talk about goals and objectives. I know that you can't see my paper, but right there, number two, it says goals and objectives for the Board of Selectmen, so, or Select Board that we're called now, I guess.
Yeah, we could put that on an agenda too, you know, and talk about if there's things we, the three of us want to accomplish this year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good.
I might, Margaret, want to reach out. I believe there is not a formal new board member orientation process. And so I don't know where necessarily to start, probably with you, but like what town departments are important to, to visit with, what other committees that we interact with are important to know. The sort of more I can understand the background of the environment, the user will be at meetings to sort of know where sort of things fit in.
Sure. I think, you know, I think about the things that we talked about tonight that have been ongoing. It's, you know, it's, it makes me think we really need to give more of a background. So, yeah, when you come back, let's talk by phone. And we can set up, we can set up something. We can do a Zoom meeting with department heads. In fact, you're welcome to come to the, a department heads meeting if you'd like. We're going to be meeting next, next week. So you're welcome to attend and sit in and listen to what we do at our department head meetings. Okay. But yeah, we can talk about that.
All right. Any other questions, comments, or questions? Then I don't believe we're going to have, we have need for an executive session tonight. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion to adjourn our first new meeting. Welcome, welcome everybody back. Scott, welcome aboard. Happy to have you. We're going to do great things this year. I know it.
Thanks. I will second the motion. At some point, it will sink in that this is a real thing and that I actually have committed at least the next three years of my life to this. So glad to be aboard.
Well, you've done it before with Ben Com. You'll be fine. All right. So there's a motion and a second. Keith, aye.
Stone aye.
Hawkins, aye.
All right. And thank you, everybody. Good meeting.